Barely similar in, in usage and land use. We kind of contemplated what it would be like if there was a one large user um on the property, whether it's a, you know, it could be a sporting complex. It could be a hotel convention center, uh something of that nature. Just to kind of break up, uh you know, the, the differences between the two concepts in Phase Two. All of the goals and, and um, 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 vision for Phase Two uh has not changed. It's just really how else could this look? And what else could um the city contemplate as, as a user or as a land use on that property? Uh so I just wanted to point that out, um that that, that is a difference that you may have seen in the past. Um and then uh we met with a, a number of stakeholders last month. Um and uh it was hosted by GSDC and roughly had fourteen or so developers. Uh, um, uh, Deed was there, uh, uh, the Initiative Foundation, uh, these similar type stakeholders who gave us uh, gave us the, gave us the opportunity to run the concepts plus them and also the redevelopment strategy. Uh, I think for the most part, what we heard and what we took away from that was that they affirmed uh the concept plans, that this is, Deed is a special piece of property, that the land use mixes as proposed, it, it fits in well, um, and that the idea that this is how this property can be redeveloped in terms of a pseudo downtown or community gathering area fit well with what they kind of saw as a vision for that property as well. Uh redevelopment strategy, um, they had lots of great ideas. A lot of the ideas we already had within redevelopment strategy framework. Uh but what I took away from that and what we all took away from that was just perhaps restructuring the strategy a little bit so that there is uh the, one of the first steps that the council and the planning commission need to do is, is come up with a, a person, an entity, a firm, that really can shepherd this project from, from, and especially within terms of Phase Two, the private development sector, um, into um reviews and, and ultimately groundbreaking. So that, that's uh structured a little bit differently, given significantly more prominence um as one of the first steps the city will need to take in order to have that and this development strategy come to realization. Uh and you want that person, firm, uh group is in place, uh that they really have the authority to kind of run with, um, meeting with developers, uh getting the regulatory reviews uh completed and, and a seamless approach. So that really kind of, um, you know, will assist uh and especially staff of which seem, you know, it, there's a, this is a big project. It's got a lot of pieces to it and having somebody that can do that and manage it um on behalf of the city is uh the main priority and main first step. Um, so beyond that, a lot of the strategies has stayed the same. Um, they would just come under the obligation and responsibility of the person that or group or firm that the, the council eventually contracts with to, to run with this redevelopment strategy. And that was something that was strongly discussed and debated during the stakeholder meeting last month as well. So, um, other than that, uh, I would be happy to answer any questions. Um, mostly it's gone unchanged except for those uh details uh from the last time that you saw it. Um, we are hoping to bring this to the city council on June twenty fourth, so in a few weeks. Uh and that will kick off um the next stage of implementing this plan.
Planning Commission members, any questions that you have um for Anita now that she's with us?
It, it's not direct, and I apologize, I wasn't, I was in Mexico in March. Um, in thinking about a timeline or thinking about process. So I'll do like worst case scenario and worser, worser, worser case scenario. So worst case scenario is the city is successful in getting all kinds of funding for the various public parts, you know, along the river. And economic conditions change, something, I don't know, we have something else and five years, six years from now, the only part that's done is the city's part. What, what would be the mechanism for the city? I mean, obviously if things are happening, we don't need a mechanism to like, are we on track? But if we've got a long period of time, wh- wh- how is the city gonna determine when it needs to review things if things are not going according, if nothing's really happening? And I, and I'd say that's a question, I'm not sure that's really a question for you.
Right. Um, well, you know, the, the whole body of the, the, the plan itself is the need to be adaptable and flexible. So if circumstances uh be on the city's control, we have a, um, we're in a major recession or something of that nature, uh, this is a living document. This is a document that would need to then be updated and initiate the conversation again. Uh, and, and that's related to market conditions, correct? Um, uh, if, if all of a sudden there isn't a demand for these types of uses or there is a developer that doesn't feel there's value in this property, then we would have to reassess. Now, we're not getting that right now and like you said, it could change uh in, in five years. Um, but again, you won't want to wait five years uh to see if the goals and the vision and the strategy isn't working. Um, you'll want to assess that much quicker and, and that's really going to be the charge of the, the group, the person, the, the point person that the council will eventually um hire to, to, to do that, to manage this project.
Okay, yeah, so it's really, the city has to figure out how it's gonna do that, okay. Cause I, I didn't think that was a fair question for you. Thanks though.
Yep.
Anita, I don't see any further questions um that they have right now. So I just wanted to share my appreciation with you of explaining that for us um and then look forward to seeing you at the end of June here.
Yeah, sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know, I have a question, but I don't know if it was for Anita or what.
Yep.
Did the church that's there?
Mm-hmm.
Do you guys know that they're possibly thinking about Salini?
Yes, uh, stat, we have, we, we've been involved with them since the beginning of this.
Because they reached out to me, so I didn't know if you guys knew, knew that they possibly will be getting out of there. Is that something that the city would consider purchasing from them? So it's that one big development?
Um.
Silly question, but.
It's a good question. No, it's not silly. Um, originally, we did want all of that. Um, but the church wanted to remain there and I know they're kind of outgrowing their space. Um, and they're just starting to look around and potentially find a different site. But as of right now, if we had to decide to purchase it today, um, financially, I don't think we'd be able to. Um, if we could afford it and everything, absolutely. But I'm not sure, the city's at a place right now where we'd be able to purchase it.
Well, and I agree. I just thought I would ask the question because I'm like, no, he reached out to me and I'm like, yeah, no, I'm not interested.
Yeah, they, we just had a meeting with them maybe like six weeks or so ago.
Okay, okay, sounds good.
Yep. Um, a few other things I just wanted to highlight. Um, Anita did talk about contracting out a project manager for this. Um, and I just wanted to bring up um some work that we've already started doing. Um, she, we planned to have that project manager be in-house, meaning a collaboration between myself, um, and then S E H, our contracted engineer. Um, and you can see here that we've done a lot of things already from the Phase One and Two studies that were completed. Um, we're looking at how we evaluate the concrete that's remaining. Some of it's very deep, um, and what to do with that. Um, we're also looking at how do we clean that up and what's the price range of that? Um, our trails and green space, we got a C R P grant um last year. So we are designing that trail space, um, that public part of this development as we speak right now. So that is something we are working on. And that green space will be within that buffer that's required for the D N R. So it's kind of a duo piece there. Um, we're also working on docks, um, and figuring out how that works with us. One of the large ticket items, um, utilities, we're working on designing and putting in utilities that are functioning to the site. Uh, we got four hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Benton County as a grant, no match grant. So that was awesome to be able to prep that for development as much as possible. We also received another grant to evaluate stormwater assessment, um, needs in that space as well. So hopefully we all have a regional ponding area. Um, and hopefully we'll get further grants to be able to actually construct that. So the sites are essentially ready to go. Um, working with D N R, like I said, the docks, there's existing buildings there. Um, and then our main concern right now is access to the site and we've talked about that multiple times. We um are working with B N S F. They have provided a letter of support. We have a few applications um for grade separated crossing that hopefully we'll hear back from in a few months or so, um, as they're closing on those applications. So there is a lot of things that we are working on in the background um that really were completed throughout this redevelopment strategy. Um, that we've really done the heavy lifting on and we spoke with um S E H representatives. And at this point, if we take on a con, another contracted employee to carry out this project management and development of this, we feel like it may bring us a step back to bring them up to speed on where we're at and everything. So as of right now, we don't have any intention of contracting out for that project manager. Um, maybe we'll get to that point, but to this date, we've handled it pretty seamlessly in-house. So I did wanna provide some light um to that because that's a large chunk of her discussion as well, so. Um, I'll take any questions that you may have for me relating to this. Otherwise, we'd be looking for a motion second to approve the redevelopment strategy of the Mill District.
Sure, I just have a question.
Mm-hmm.
So reading through all of that over the weekend, there's, there's a lot of emphasis on flexibility.
Mm-hmm.
I guess, and I don't, maybe you can't answer, but what, to what degree of flexibility where? And, and here's why I say this, is, as I look at, there's, you know, there's mixed use residential, there's commercial, there's office space, there's green space. Um, you know, and if I evaluate around, you know, kind of the, the communities around here, office space isn't probably something that's direly needed. So I just start to wonder to, to what degree of flexibility are they seeking? And I, and again, you can't, you can't ordinance your way or zone your way into all of it. But I'm just curious if there's been discussion on, on how that will come through.
Right, yeah, we focused on this, like, yes, this is going for approval and this is our strategy. But it's a working document and it's a guide, so we really need to focus on that. Um, and as part of this, part of some of our winter work that we'll be doing this winter is creating design standards and that actual Mill District that we'll be able to craft a, a zoning district specific um to this. But then you get to the situation of the chicken before the egg. We don't wanna limit potential development that comes in. So I think it'll be really a close partnership that the city has with potential developers on what that looks like and ultimately it would come to the planning commission and council for approval of does this align with the goals and objectives within this document? So we wanna make sure there is a lot of flexibility because um with a bunch of meetings with developers and agencies, um, primary concern is having that flexibility and knowing what they can and cannot do there. Um, so it's a work in progress, I would say, at this point.
Sure, very good. Thank you.
Anita made mention that one of the first tasks for the council would be to approve who the, or the recommendation to identify a, a commercial development partner. Is it a single or could there be multiple? And then I guess, I'm sure you've been, in order to draft, a lot of this developers were consulted. But I'm curious if and when the council makes that decision to select a single or multiple developers, that's who will be coming to us, correct? To start requesting zoning changes and then we'll be required to consult the guide, make sure that it's within those guidelines, correct?
Correct, yes. It'll, um, so prior to us purchasing the Mill property and the additional properties that came with it, um, we did have a sole developer that wanted to purchase all, the entire acreage. Um, of course, that comes with the cost because they were also doing the heavy lifting of applying for the grants and so forth. So, um, we anticipate it being multiple developers, but this developer is still interested in the Mill District specifically. Um, so I wouldn't be surprised if they came forward again once we have all of um this work figured out and once we hear about the access piece. Um, but then it'll really come down to that public-private partnership where we'll go back and forth and really make sure that everything aligns with, not everything, but that we're looking at this re- redevelopment strategy and making sure that we're still similar in our goals and that we're not changing much. Because there was a significant amount of input from residents, businesses, um, and just regional partners as well.
Is the city gonna, or is the council going to? I guess where are the recommendations coming from or did the city send out the developer for R F P?
Um, the developer that we've spoken with in the past came to us. We didn't go out for R F P or R F I or anything um from that. Um, anything related to the Mill District um will come to planning commission in that regard um and ultimately to council. I, I anticipate that um part of having a developer on board, they will probably charge a fee monthly. The last one was significant, but like I said, that was for the entire properties, all the properties. Um, so it'll have to go to that council anyway because they'll give the approval of those payments to them. But it'll come to planning commission because everything's going to be dictated by the land use and zoning and things in that aspect.
I was just looking at the timeline, last question. Uh, it's high level in, in the plan, but in my mind, right, and Anita said it in a few words, like that's, that's the first step into seeing progress with this is selecting that partner or partners. Is that really, we, we don't, we don't foresee that happening until twenty-five?
Uh, I would anticipate that, yeah. The first question we get is access and most people will not touch that site until we have.
Until that project's completed, that makes sense.
Or at least until, I, I would foresee a developer getting on board once we have the design of um what that grade separated crossing looks like and how it impacts the property.
Sure.
Cause there's a lot of ifs and the grade and tying all of that in. It, it's a large project and very expensive. So until we get some of those questions answered, we were basically told no one will touch it yet. Cause price tag for the grade separated is, will probably be around twenty-six million. So it's a big chunk.
So which approach? I mean, are we talking about going over the railroad tracks or uh, over it, through it?
Over it, yeah.
Over it?
Mm-hmm.
Coming, can I ask where it's coming off of? Is that coming off of twenty-nine?
Um, yep, yep, so it, there's a.
Almost like a clover leaf type of thing?
There's a few different designs out there. One, um.
I can see why that would be expensive.
Yeah, one leaves the access or where it is right now to serve the church parking lot. One um removes that and makes them access it from the grade separated crossing. Um, and then one also puts a roundabout where the current access to the church lot is. So there's a few different aspects, but Benton County kind of dictates where that'll be.
And then my question on that is when is that supposed to be approved?
We will find out when our funding applications get scored and ranked, so probably later this summer.
Okay, just curious.
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion on the redevelopment strategy? See, now, we'll be looking, is there a motion to approve the Mill District redevelopment strategy?
Move to approve?
I'll second it.
All in favor signify with a aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? If there's a motion, here is. Moving on to item B, rezonance variance for T T T Housing LLC.
All right, this item is um a twofold. Here you'll see that there's a rezonance request which will come first. Um, and then there'll be a variance request um submitted by T T T Housing that you can see here currently, um, it is Zone B two, our general business district. Their requested plan is to rezonance to R three, our multifamily residential um to construct a three-story, forty-eight-unit slab-on-grade apartment complex. Um, here you can see, I'll go over this in a little bit. You can see the site plan of what they've submitted here, um, and then the location we're talking about is a portion of this outlot. Here, you can see to the right here, this is for reference the newly recon, or newly constructed apartment complex that was finished um this year. So their request is to rezonance it. Um, if, you can look in the memo, but this is consistent with the surrounding area as it's surrounded by multifamily um housing developments. A lot of the surrounding areas were rezoned as well within the past um few years here. Although the future land use of this area that you can see here dictates it to be town squares, this blue identified area, that was from our twenty sixteen comprehensive plan. That is still our current comprehensive plan. Um, we have no properties actually zoned, our town square. It, it was something that came from the comprehensive plan. Um, and sometimes in comp plans, not everything is carried out how it is designed to be or guided to be. So since then, you can see here, there's some blue properties where my cursor is. That was rezoned um to R three for the multifamily development that you can see it was supposed to be town square. Um, and we've kind of shifted away from the town square concept um that you can see here. The current zoning, um, red indicates our general business district. Uh, this property, we actually rezoned back in twenty twenty-one from B two to R three. Um, the color hasn't changed yet, but um you can see here that this red area is identified as our B two general business district right now and it follows along Pinecone Road. Future land use across Roberts Road um is a mix of general business and our medium-density housing, town home-type situations. But potentially in the future, I could see it going to R three as well just to consolidate where apartment complexes are um there as well. So this applicant um submitted this because they're proposing um a low and moderate income housing development project. Um, the applicant plans to submit this app, their application to the M F H A um to receive funding from them as well. And hopefully they'll hear from their, um, from that awarding at the end of this year. I wanna do the rezonance request first because if, we'll, we'll continue on. But from a council standpoint, if the rezonance request wasn't approved, then the variance i- is kind of null and void because it doesn't align with um the zoning district in the first place. So first, I wanna answer any questions that you have um relating to the zoning, rezoning request first, and then we'll jump into the variance and look over the site plan and what they submitted um as well. So I'll take any questions that you have regarding the rezonance first.
So I am, could you, so there's two, kind of, it's related. Is, is, is the current property that's kind of half-bell shaped, is that one parcel?
Right here you're talking?
Yeah, is that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that's a single parcel and so, and on the plan, kind of looking ahead, is that proposed that the, the entire parcel will be rezoned? Or just the area where the apartment complex is going to be? Is that gonna be like, gonna, we're gonna create two separate parcels and only the one parcel is gonna be rezoned?
Yeah, good question. Um, I was going to get into that and I just, it blew my mind. But, um, so they are requesting to rezonance just the portion that they're developing.
Okay.
So that would be the portion that would be R three. And then this upper part here, let's say, will be still B two.
But, but they will own that?
They will own that. Um, part of the requirement that they have um in a purchase agreement with current property owner is, this has to be final platted, it has to come back. Um, so once that is final platted, it'll create another parcel. This will stay an outlot towards the top and this will be a lot one, block one of whatever they name it. So it is just that portion. Um, you'll see this. Um, if this goes uh forward in the approval process, you'll see the final plat come to you as well. Cause it needs to be, it was just preliminary platted, this whole area was multiple years ago and it just has parceled off.
Can you, I'm stretching my mind here, but can you remind me when, the, the, wasn't there a moratorium put in place by council that would help, that asked for pause on multifamily developments?
Yes, that was when they were um going through with rezoning the entire city.
Yep.
Um, it was up in twenty twenty-one. So since then, um, we have rezoned properties that you can see. I um highlighted that we did rezonance one already in twenty twenty-one, right after the moratorium and after we rezoned the entire city limits. So it has happened since then, but that was just a year moratorium, just so we could go through. Um, at that time, they wanted to consolidate this area with multifamily housing and then um be able to make sure that our properties are zoned the way the city would like them to be. And that's also when we went um and did the O A A with Leesock Township. So it coincided with each other.
Okay, so since that moratorium expired, I guess this twenty-one was before my time. That's the first time that we've changed from a, a B two to an R three.
Since then, yes, the, this one property where the new um apartments are right now is the one time we have.
And there's no direction from council to planning commission as of right now? For any reason to not approve something like this?
No, there is no direction um from them.
It's not in their plan or they're, they're not gonna, okay.
No.
Just wanna clarify that.
Um, I, I did just wanna provide some high-level highlights here. Um, as we, we understand that we don't have a whole lot of R three zone properties, really this, this last chunk here and potentially if this is rezoned, but is really all we have that's buildable and ready to go for apartment complexes in the city. Um, at this time, of course, all these properties where my cursor is, is still township. So that'll, that'll be zoned when it's annexed in.
Thanks for the clarification.
I guess, Carrie, I'll just maybe add a couple of things. So going back to twenty sixteen when we did um the rezonance, we did the big update to the comprehensive plan. And then we had the moratorium that come, came in. Um, I, I guess some, some issues that I'll bring up is, is we've been kind of nickel and diming little chunks of property at a time. So during some of those meetings, um, the city took a lot of backlash from the landowner about what was going to occur. You know, we said there'd be, you know, consideration and flexibility. But I mean, now if we go further, I guess up and off the screen, there's another one that's in progress there. So I guess, and I, and on to Colin's question, so I, I recognize there's no direction that the city council's giving, they're kind of seeking our recommendation. But I know the comprehensive plan has to get updated. So my question, I guess, is, you know, there was a lot of, a lot of excitement about multifamily housing back in twenty-one that prompted the moratorium and now we're getting, you know, again, this is the third, third one that I know of. Um, is it still important to the city? So if that comprehensive plan is gonna be updated or needs updated, should it be reflecting that this is important to the city versus what they thought that vision was gonna be?
Yeah, um, and I'll try to speak as best, as. Yeah, um and I'll try to speak as best as I can.
Does that make sense? I'm sorry, it was kind of.
I think I understand what your um what your question is, but correct me if I'm wrong and help me through this um answer. But the comprehensive plan obviously was important at that time. A lot has changed since then, we did have a decent amount of growth since then. Of course, the multifamily developments. And honestly, at this point, the whole concept of town square is 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 just not feasible right now. We built a new roadway through there, i- it's. It's not something that I anticipate a town square being here, we just talked about the Mill District. I anticipate that being more of our downtown um area. But then I also understand that we do need to preserve general business districts as well, which we understand is most likely going to occur off Pinecone Road. We we see that when we drive um in this area, but. That we will have to balance what's important um when we look at that comp plan again and refine it. Because that'll be in the next few years here, that we'll start working on that. I don't know if that answered your question, or you could help me.
So wasn't that road built to accommodate that rezone for that apartment complex that went in to the other one?
This road here?
Correct.
Yes.
So originally that road wasn't even, that that came as a result of accommodating the result for the apartment complex?
Yes, this was built primarily to function right now, I mean, there's, this will connect here that you can see um into. However, that goes through this property here into Scout and Daley. Um but this was constructed for the sole purpose of access for the multifamily housing.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion from the members regarding the rezone? Seeing none specific to the rezone, I would be looking for a motion to approve the rezone. Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? I can say. Very good, I have a motion and a second for approval of the rezone, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion for a rezone carries.
The second part of this application um is a variance request. So within our current ordinance with al- aligning with our R three district. There is a requirement that forty percent of the parking needs to be covered, whether that's a tuck underneath garage or some sort of cover. Right now, the application um is to provide a hundred percent of the parking um onsite surface parking, so just a standard parking lot. This is part of their application, like I said previously. One of the high, high-level items of this application to the housing is local. Local sho- support, how do we show local support for this project? And part of that would be a variance approval, so this is why they submitted for this variance. Um to be able to show that local participation and local support is there um on their end. So by having on only surface parking, not garage parking, underground parking. Um it reduces costs to be able to make this project go forward um and meet their gaps in fundings that they need. Within any variance resolution that we're familiar with, there are findings, and I'll go through each of them. Um so we can go through any questions that you have on that. Part of this is making sure it aligns with our compreh- comprehensive plan that we've discussed um in detail on this past item. But part of that is to ensure lifetime housing of um all of our residents here. So that is meeting one of the goals within the comprehensive plan. Um and then there's a restriction on the property if they would get funding um for this development. There's a restriction to ma- ensure that it is providing affordable housing even years down the road. So it is a fifty-year restriction that would be on the property, and that's between the property owner and the funding sources. But I just want to go into some detail of how we're showing local support. So we get statewide affordable housing, Sartell gets this. We, the first year we received it was in twenty twenty-three, and then in twenty twenty-four. They have submitted a request for the entire amount that we are allotted of eighty-four thousand six hundred and six. And this will be brought to um council at the same time when the rezone and variance goes as well. They are the ones who grant that approval and that allocation of funds. Um but I just wanted to make sure that you're aware as well that they did apply for the statewide affordable housing through us. As well, as part of this project to show local support. Um I'll go into some of the findings here, all of the findings that we have. So one, the variance is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of our zoning ordinance. We just rezoned it or motion to um or recommend to council that to rezone it to R three multifamily. Like I s- stated, it aligns with our comprehensive plan by ensuring lifetime housing. They'll have a restriction on the property like I stated. Then this variance, if approved, would increase the opportunity for the applicant to be selected for that um funding source. As well, because it's showing that we, the city, have aided in showing support um for that. Any questions on number one, how this variance is in harmony with the general purposes of our zoning ordinance? And I'll show the site plan here, I'll bring it up. You can see here. A plan that they have put together showing that they are providing all the parking. And the onsite surface parking, and that there's no covered parking of any aspect um proposed.
Can you remind me what are, how many, I mean, it's a forty-eight unit building. And how many parking spots are required for a forty-eight unit building? Or does it, is it, is it n- numbers of parking places per bedroom?
Yeah, it's per bedroom, and this meets their requirement that they're um needing for that, yeah, it goes by per bedroom.
And this, I'm sorry, this maybe is premature in this question here. Do we have any other properties in Sartell that have one hundred percent surface parking?
O- older properties have a decent amount of surface parking.
And and again, I I realize this is just a a sketch, but now I look at. Outside roadways of if they had to vacate this lot for snow removal or maintenance or. Uh various things, do we have infrastructure in place to? Let's just generically say to put a hundred cars on the street?
That would be, that is a great question. I don't believe that Beetle Boulevard alone could handle, let's say, all the in, all the cars are there at one time, and they're doing this overnight. Uh that would be a coordination effort that they would need to talk to the city and our public works team about. Because we have to coordinate, of course, plowing as well. Um so that's something that we would have to work with them on.
And it's just that, the the image alone, where would they put their excess snow?
Right, the, this isn't completely solidified as it's just.
Sure, I'm just saying, those are my questions.
Yeah, it's more than cons- conceptual, but um there are some questions that we'll have, of course. Um if and when it gets to that site plan approval process of where you can put the s- snow storage, you can put it in the ponds. So you'd have to truck it off-site potentially. We do have a representative here from um the applicant, so I don't know if you've evaluated some of those as well. And if you wanna provide any highlight to their question?
And again, just, you know, going back to our our previous discussion about um a rezone. So far, intent was only to rezone, and again, I I recognize this is just an image, just that location. What, what are we doing with the rest of the property? I mean, is that? And again, that's not a an answer I'm looking for, I'm just saying, I could. Picture snow piling up on an area that we probably don't want it, but nonetheless, please, sir, do you have an answer to that?
Sir, thank you, I'm Jamie at the Illinois Sand Companies, um representing the TT Development, excuse me. Um we're local here, we're in Austin, Weimar, and we've been here for uh in business since nineteen ninety-one. We've built a lot of projects, probably almost forty of these projects, our first one is nineteen ninety-four, which is still on and operating. We already have a project here in Sar- in uh Sartell Grand Mall Homes. So um yeah, the uh we definitely have a s- snow management plan for all our developments, what happens when there's certain levels of snow. But usually the biggest thing is that night, you know, if there's snow that night, right away in the morning, they come and clear out the drivelanes. And then people are asked to move to different areas of parking lanes, or they could, obviously they work, they might be gone in the morning, or something like that. Or they might be on the street for a very short time, but we deal with this on all our developments, and it's really not that big of a deal. There's store storage can happen someplace on the site, otherwise, if not, it gets humped away, but we do deal with that all the time. Except maybe it's last year.
Very good, thank you.
The variance is really a a key component to our application, because uh it's like you guys are applying for money for the mill site. Our our application is very competitive, and it's a great opportunity that um that we can use as a social movement for the project. Makes a huge difference for our project. But I'm here, if any, you got any questions at all, so.
Since since I've got you up here, ju- jumping, it's just kind of jumping ahead, my ignorance. What is passive house P I, P H I U S design, what does that mean?
Yeah, it's really a a design, an environmental-friendly building. There's all sorts of testing that that the the building gets designed with, certain energy standards. You know, how the building is framed, it's really a high-level, you know, you know, I always hear rebuilding. This is another phase of that, actually a phase that's pretty new to Minnesota. We're doing a couple of projects right now, one of the first ones in Minnesota. But it's really a efficient place for um how the building is constructed, saving energy and things like that for residents and for property owners. It's actually a a pretty unique uh designing place in the project, but it's very significant in this.
Thanks.
Good question, dear, I'd know that.
Okay, I will move on to number two. Their request is consistent with our comprehensive plan that we've discussed. Um future land use um shows that it should be town square, however, we evaluated that um as well previously. There are similar properties along Roberts Road, um and definitely along Beetle Boulevard there. That this project is located at, that are zoned either currently R three. Or our medium-to-high-density residential for future land use, and then it also butts B two general business district. So we believe that this is cohesive with the um surrounding area and consistent with the proposed development and location. Any questions relating to number two? Seeing none, I'll move on. The applicant proposes to use the proper property appropriately. It is a permitted use within our R three multifamily residential district. Like I stated previously, it's a, they're proposing a three-story forty-eight unit low and moderate income residential development, pretty straightforward there. Number four, um the plight of the landowners due to circum- circumstances unique to the property, not created by the land, landowner. This proposed development was designed in a manner which maximizes the property, as you can see here on the site plan. They're utili- they're utilizing this larger outlot and making sure they're using the least amount of space within our guidelines. And meeting their needs as well. Um and then also leaving this, um whether that is retained by this property owner or future property owner, or it's retained by the current property owner. There's still space to be able to develop that appropriately as well. Like I've stated as well, he stated that this shows local participation and thus hopefully increasing their scoring within the competitive round for the applicant for their funding sources. Any questions related to four? I'll move on, variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The surrounding properties, as you can see, have already been developed uh to the R three multifamily standards. There is vacant zone property that we can see here, that is Zoned R three multifamily residential as well. And it is cohesive like we've stated previously, any questions on number five? Number six, a key item is economic considerations alone do not constitute practical, practical difficulties. Meaning how do we get to approving this variance and understanding it? The applicant um is not solely requesting this variance um for the surface parking from a financial perspective. As we've stated a few times, it is part of their application um for their funding. And the thus would increase their scoring and also showing that the city of Sartell backs their application and really supports this project. Is other considerations of why they submitted this variance request. Any questions on six? And then seven, um board of adjustments, meaning you guys. May impose conditions to ensure compliance protect protect the property values and adjacent properties as well. That we've looked at and discussed um in depth. Some conditions that staff have identified is that they did submit a site plan, we've looked at that. That the development and developer shall construct um generally construct as presented within this site plan. Of course, there may be needed no modifications um requested by city staff and engineering during the site plan and building plan approval process. And if it would alter significantly from what is proposed here in front of you, we'd have to bring it back to approve that site plan then as well.
So that covers if we need to change access for emergency vehicles, obnoxious signing, screening, et cetera.
Correct, yes, any, anything that really, I don't anticipate any changes that are vastly. Um considerate of needing review, um but I I don't think if we're moving a tree or something, that's kind of a waste of our time. Um but if anything changes drastically from what they're proposing, we will need to review that. Because we are doing a lot of things to show our support, but we also need to make sure that they're building what they're proposing to us. As well, and just protect us. And also, it's, it's a way that when we have future applications or similar applications that we have documentation purposes. Just to ensure compliance and really that paper trail of down the road, we get a lot of questions. Why do they have surface parking, and why do we need garages when they don't have them? Well, here's a document showing all the steps that they went through in the approval processes. And then B is another condition that we've identified, that all other R three multifamily residential district requirements stated within our ordinance. Shall be met outside of what is approved for this ordinance. So meaning that if down the road, um we can look back at a recent project where we had to approve a variance later for a fence. For development, if there is any deviation from their requirements, they will have to follow all the standard processes and procedures. For any variance um if needed that they discover. For example, if something happened during site plan approval and they had to shift the building five feet closer, and now they're not within setbacks. They'd have to follow that standard process. Those are the only conditions that um we've identified from a staff level. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have or any other concerns that we could include as a condition. But as of now, those are the conditions that we've identified.
If you don't mind, uh just a a question uh in regards to, so I appreciate that the due diligence for the variance. The, and maybe I missed it, but the reasoning behind not doing like a few of the other. The, and maybe I missed it, but the reasoning behind not doing like a few of the other properties around have underground par- uh, underground parking. Is the, the, the site just not feasible to do that, is it a significant expense, just curious the, the request?
Yes, probably two parts to it, um, uh, one of the, one part is obviously the, the site would change. The building footprint changed, you know, detach garage, that, you know, a larger lot, um, and that's, um, something that we looked at. Uh, but the other piece too is, we, we have lots of other, we have other projects with parking garages and or underground parking. We typically do not charge for that, and I would suspect that most places, uh, in Sartell probably do charge for parking. Some don't, some do, um, so that's a savings for some potential residents. And what it makes a, a difference on is, uh, since we're not charging for it. We can use those costs as part of the funding source that we have for the project, so that's what makes a, makes a difference. But it is, it is a, it is a benefit for residents not to have to pay for the parking.
I, I probably should have asked this question back when we did the rezone, so what happens if you don't get the money from the state?
If we wouldn't, um, we could, if we weren't get, uh, the funding at the end of this year, we could look at it again next year. Um, it, it wouldn't happen without this funding.
Right.
Um, it would, it, it's all contingent on that, and our purchase is contingent on it too, so property owners won't. So without the funding, it will, will.
Which is not a question for you, so, we, we've just, we've just rezoned a property. It's, it's gonna go to the council, and again, worst case scenario, you don't get the funding this year. You don't get the funding next year, you have a purchase agreement which is contingent upon getting the funding. And now we have. A property that we have rezoned and is a future. Which is not your question, this is a question. I don't know if we goofed. Do you have a, what's?
Well, yeah.
I hate to ask this kind of question, but, okay, if I was a betting man, which I'm not. What, what are your chances of getting the funding?
Um, I, it's, I think we got a decent shot at, if we get the variance to help show the local participation, we just got awarded a project in Way Park. Um, we decided one a couple of years ago, I think in twenty twenty, we opened it, we opened St. Joseph's property in twenty twenty one. Um, so I think we're, it's a pretty good opportunity, you, you a- ask a great question. But it's always the chicken or the egg, you know, one thing, they, they may ask, well, what's the city, you know, we're gonna fund you this money and else in the city says we're not gonna rezone you. So it is a little bit chicken or leg for all of, you know, for any type, and, you know, somebody else may do a building, but they can't do what we do. Uh, like Carrie mentioned, we have specific guidelines for us, I mean, uh, um, it's long, it's for, affordable for a long period of time, that's. Difficult and, you know, if we don't, somebody else picks it up and they propose the exact same building, maybe that's okay. But, you know, they probably couldn't use that variance without those requirements, but it is a great question, but is, is it somewhat a chicken or egg? And where do you, right, and, and a lot of times, obviously, for the funding piece, they wanna see that you can do this project on the site, so.
I can appreciate that, and, and I think what I appreciate hearing specifically as. Two other local properties, historically, you've, you've applied for variances like this and been awarded the grant.
Well, both those properties didn't require any type of covered parking.
Okay.
So we did not, uh, so, there was other things that we may have, uh, St. John's mother, or, uh, St. John's mother participation. They did, not have required underground parking or underground or covered parking.
Sure.
But we would have if that wasn't the case.
David, to answer your question from a city perspective, um, these documents will get recorded with the plat. Um, if the plat, if they don't secure their funding and they don't move forward with the plat. It doesn't get recorded. So, there's no skin off our back.
Excellent question, dude.
So, I, and that may have been oversight on my explanation, but this does get recorded with the plat. I don't record anything until that plat comes in, cause as you can see here, it says a portion of Outlet A. That'll actually be the lot one, block one of San Pla- whatever that is, so. That is a little protection from our end as well.
So my question is, is why? Please don't be offended by what I'm gonna ask, cause I'm new to this whole process. But why would the city decide to take that ordinance away for garage covering? And I'm sorry to say, being a past apartment dweller for almost fifteen years. I'll be honest, I wouldn't rent an apartment that didn't have a garage, and I was never charged for the garage.
Yeah, that's a great question, uh, one big difference that you see is our rental rates are gonna be significantly lower than others. Because our rental rates are restricted to certain levels of people's income, uh, it's not based on their income, but it's based on, um.
So it's based on a low income family?
It's based, yes.
They have to apply.
Yep, so their rent is obviously gonna be much less than market rent, typically it's twenty to thirty percent less.
Yeah.
So that's a great question, but that's really the difference.
Any further questions for myself?
Carrie, I guess that's one of my questions too, is why does the city wanna go forward just to show local support?
Okay, yeah.
You know, my concern is, is you know my concern about the area apartments the way it is, so why?
There are a few things, um, and let me just go into a little bit of detail that you'll see in the future, we're going to have, within our memos. That you see, um, in the blue here, we're going to have a factors of influence of what is. What are outside influences that staff and why are we recommending to you guys to approve this? One of them, like I've stated, um, an influence factor on this project is. We have that, that affordable housing money that is allocated to the city of Sartell to. Give out, um, if we don't use that, it has to get put into a. A housing trust fund, most likely, we don't have that established right now. Um, we've actually spent all of the money that we've received from the state for this, um, almost immediately, so that's one factor. That we would like to s- soc- show support for some sort of. Affordable housing, whether that's this project, um, or we gave the similar, same amount to SaberCon. And Habitat for Humanity to help with their project there, so that's one, um, influence factor. Another one is we still get development fees, the city still retains development fees when you're plating, final plating this property. We also get building permit fees, so there's a revenue basis as well that's influencing us in our recommendation. So there's a few other reasons besides just showing support for this project, um, there's some financial reasons. Um, and then, we've already spoken with people at the state level of, we've spent all of our housing. Aid that you've provided to us to date, most cities are still figuring out how to spend that money. And it's showing that we need more, we need more, um, affordable housing. Dollars given to us because we've identified it as a need, we've spent, we've spent everything that we've had, um. To date, so just showing that we are thinking outside the box of housing options and how to meet that need in the area. Is another factor of influence, um, besides just showing support. Does that answer your question, Karen?
Yes, but I think you can offer that with a covered parking.
Fair enough.
Sorry, further discussion? See, uh, so speaking specifically to the approval of the variance request, I would be seeking a motion and a second. For approval of the variance request as presented. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
There is a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second it.
There is a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, I oppose.
The motion carries seriously. Moving on to old business, there is an undocumented item five, other business aid project updates.
Alright, I've been speaking with Tony who is, um, heading our. Our park commission, um, that was recently established. He has been inundated with meetings, they actually meet twice monthly right now, and their meetings are sometimes three or four hours, so they. They are busy, um, but we've been back and forth, I've shared them, our discussion about park plating versus. Park zoning and everything, um, they would like to have a joint workshop. However, it's their busy time, so I don't foresee this happening until fall or winter. Um, there's no real concerns from a planning perspective of that as. This was sparked from the golf course sale primarily, um. And hopefully that's something that we can work on together and. Get that figured out and determined, um, to move forward and they really just wanna hear our thoughts of why we. What we would prefer, whether it's park zoning or plating, um, but that'll be in the future agenda and we'll kinda do it at a workshop. Probably in the conference room and work together on that as well. Um, I don't have specific project updates, um, any project updates that you would like from me? Um, at all? We, we do, um, we're, from a development perspective, we're rather busy with commercial developments, so. We do anticipate, um, Centurgar submitting an application for a large expansion, um, in our healthcare hub area. We do have River Crossings filling out some of their lots right now, um, all that's done administratively and we also do have a. New autism clinic coming to the city, that is, they just broke ground last week, but we're working through some site plan approvals, so. Looking good this year as well, um, from a development perspective. I don't have any planning commission updates, um, either, or discussion, but that's up for you.
Just, uh, it has listed here about July first.
Yes.
Will we have enough for a forum? Uh, I will not be here.
Okay.
For sure.
I'm here all the, I'm here every Monday, unless it's a holiday.
Uh, I am going to be, I'm almost certain I'm going to be gone.
That you will or you won't?
I will. I will be absent the week of, the first week in July, I will not be in Sartell.
Okay, I will just clarify with Christine, she had some things come up today, um, and I will let you know if we have. Yes, we need three. Let me verify that, um. And, right, and, um, as of right now, I don't have any agenda items. So depending on that, I can always, within my time limits that I need to meet, I can always push that out too.
Per- perhaps maybe an asterisk depending on what it is, if it's worth.
Yeah.
A full commission. I don't case it out, once I put it, I'll, I'll put it in, yeah.
Yeah.
Only three people.
Yeah, and, um, when, I do know ahead of time when these items, the rezone and variance go to council. Jill Smith is gone, um, and so is. One other person is gone for sure, so there'll only be three, um, as well, but they just need a majority, so.
Open discussion, anybody have anything for open discussion?
I have nothing else for you guys.
With that, you'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
My motion to adjourn?
I will second, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Your conversation, thank you everyone.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.